Okay, I'll call this meeting to order. Is there any public input? Do I hear approval of the minutes for October 2nd?
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
Any errors or omissions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Do you hear a motion to accept the minutes of October 10th budget work session?
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
Any errors or omissions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, the manifest were done by Kim and Greg. And the Treasury's report.
Jerry, go ahead. Very last minute, we made the drive tonight. Treasury's report is usually early, sooner than four o'clock. Jerry was here, so we reviewed it and he did sign off on it. No particular major activity during the month of September. Got what we're supposed to get from the town and everything else flowing through. The September adequacy aid payment actually came in the end of August. So that's, that's why this is a little lower than you might be used to seeing in September. I believe it was like the 30th or 31st of August because the first was a weekend. So they accelerated that payment a little bit.
Aren't the first two payments generally lower than the catch-up semester?
Thirty, thirty, twenty, twenty, no, the first two payments usually are larger.
Oh, okay.
And then the April payment is net of any adjustments around. We can exclude them over there. We did run a quick expenditure report. Which was distributed. At this point, it's obvious that we don't have all our encumbrances in place. September is usually a, oh yeah, I need to do that kind of month. It doesn't tell you an awful lot other than that's what we have reported at this point. We have the encumbrances to date and the actual activity to date after the first one at school. So October will take care of some of the items. Couple of them are pretty obvious. We know and discussed leadership, for example, at that elementary school. There's nothing to cover at this point, so we'll fill in some of those gaps as we move on.
Any questions for Tom?
Thank you, Tom. I think our next budget workshop is next Monday, the 23rd. Four thirty to seven. And I hope everybody's prepared. No unfinished business? New business, anything?
Great, you're bored. We'll have, we'll have a poll to give us more detailed report in November. Per the metric, the matrix, just a little bit of what we've done. We've tried to clear out the fifteen, sixteen grants, which we've done. I know it's hard to believe we're seventeen, eighteen, but those grants do have some carryover ability to them. So that, that's been, that's been, those grant funds have been expended sixteen, seventeen. For the most part, those grants have been expended as well, so we're in seventeen, eighteen. The, the initial allocations for seventeen, eighteen versus sixteen, seventeen is about a ninety thousand dollar less. These are federal, federal matters. Title twos less, several other programs that we're not accessing any longer. Including the Priority Focus, SIG, if you will. So, so there's a, you know, less, less money flowing into our coffers via the, the federal grants. There's still about six hundred fifty-four thousand total grants. The vast majority of that being Title I-A grants and then the IDEA grants as well. Title I being a little over three hundred thirteen thousand, IDEA being about a hundred ninety-five thousand. And those are the gross allocations and, like I said, I will ask Paul to give us the full report that we normally do in November at the next meeting. So far this year regarding the, the Title II grants, which are used primarily to support staff development, our mentoring program, so on. We've expended or at least earmarked about half of that grant at this point. So we still have a fairly good amount left and Title II will be watching out of a bin of night toward the Fed to see what we're going to get out of that, if anything, next year. That'll, that'll affect at least a little bit what we do with Title II work forward.
Next item on the agenda is web marketing proposal from NotchNet.
You want to talk about that, Dale? Do you want me to talk about that?
Either one?
Either one.
I don't think it's any, any secret, and I, as I said in my, my note too the other day, that we've got several things happening here. First of all, getting, I mean, the, the webpage itself is not, is not terribly, it's not set up and it doesn't have the capacity to do some of the things that we'd like to do. Having said that, it's only going to be as good in some respects as what we make it as well in terms of information that we put in and so on. We have tried to make some effort to update some of the things. The fact is that the platform that we're using, it's a free platform, Google, Google platform. You know, if you, if you access it on a computer, it's, it's one thing. If you try to access it on a, on a phone, it's entirely different. As I, as you probably, as you probably know, the calendar's worthless on a phone, as are some of the tabs. So we have talked to NotchNet, we had a meeting last week with them. They do the, they do the page development and hosting. Or facilitate the hosting, they don't do it, but they facilitate the hosting for the hospital as well as the town. And so I think Dale, Dale, I know included in your folder a, a proposal from them to help us with the webpage. We would also expect to incorporate some of the work going forward in the webpage to our technology program, technology class as well, but getting, getting things updated and improved, that needs to be done first before we do a whole lot else from the, from the student's standpoint. So, I would like to move forward. The tech committee commenced today, so I did, I did want to get a little bit of feedback from them before we went much further.
So, so we actually had two different companies and Kim was able to come to the first presentation with a, with a company more web-based. And then we met with NotchNet last week. After speaking with the committee today, there was nine or 10 members from the entire school district, so Lakeway, as well as the high school, middle school, and, and all of us were in favor of the NotchNet proposal.
Was the price pretty comparable to the other, or did the other even bid on it?
The other gave us a quote of about fifteen thousand to start and then six thousand per year thereafter. And this one is sixty-two hundred upfront and then five hundred dollars a year to maintain.
I think we'll find some ways to do some of the things that happened to you with the wonderful program. Actually, I spoke with them today and told them we would be moving forward with them at this time, probably. But it, it takes a lot of management. In terms of you have to, you have to really, if someone has to manage all the content that goes on there and screen it before it goes on to make sure it meets guidelines and so on, so. You know, I think if at this time, we ought to clean up what we have, the webpage, and also look at some other little apps that we can, we can, we can use that will help push information out, which is what happened to you is really good.
So how will we manage updating content? Is it going to be by department? Is it going to be NotchNet's responsibility to finalize it?
So they're just going to build the page for us and then release it to us. So it's a WordPress foundation, so you can set up different user access. So we could give an administrative assistant only access to the calendar for updates, nothing else on the site. So it's can be set up user-specific. Which is something that we need to clean up in-house anyways, we've already talked about that as a group.
So we'll do all that in-house?
Correct. They would just do the initial setup and building of the site. They would build it on our second domain in the background. And then, you know, we'd release it all at the same time, but we'd be able to see the work as they progress. The public wouldn't, because it wouldn't be live, but we'd be able to see all the updates that they were doing and changes that they were making before we agreed to release the work.
And we hope to in time, certainly with appropriate supervision and all of our students. We have a web class, a consulting class now. And certainly be able to push content out there. And work also with our digital, video production class. Get some clips and so make it more affordable.
I've had many business dealings with NotchNet through my careers and I find that they're really thorough and they don't walk away. If you have a problem or whatnot, Veronica's White Delta is right there. So they have a good reputation and they stood up to do it.
As, as I said, let me reiterate, it'll only be as good as our ability to get stuff into. And I know we have to pick that up, continue to work with that and organize that better.
So sorry to pause the fun, but Tom, where did that come from?
I don't know, Dale. I, I think he's got something left in contracted services. Which will take care of the initial and then it will just be subscription going forward on hold, so that would just be a regular budget item. Certainly at that amount of money, it'll probably be worth it.
Money well spent.
So looking at these two different companies, that's your recommendation?
Yes, it is.
Do I hear a motion to accept that contract?
So moved. Well, I can say it out if you want me to. Make the motion that we accept the contract as presented from notchnet.com, uh, NotchNet.
Your second?
Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Our enrollment report. Our enrollment for the month of October is a hundred and twenty-nine students. Again, that number will fluctuate as we have many people in the process of being evaluated right now. We have one vacant parent position due to a resignation, so that was posted on the School Sprint today. And then, just an update on the ESOL services. You know, we are still needing to address that issue. There hasn't been any resolution yet, but there is a posting for that time submission. We've had two applicants that are not certified apply, which really defeats what we can do with that. Because we really do need somebody certified, we can complete the testing. So, we do need to figure out a solution for that for our student. Because we do have some kids that are not being serviced to the capacity that they should be. Hopefully, we get some applicants.
Is the application still open?
It is still posted, yeah.
Is it a full-time position or a part-time position?
Well, right now, the advertised position's point five and Mr. Denny's contract is point three ESOL. But he's not able to do point three ESOL. I don't even know what he's doing, point two right now. So combined, it, there could be a point eight position between the two of them, but like I said, he's not able to even do the point three like that, so.
What's your backup plan should you not find a candidate with testing coming up and?
Well, there's a couple things that have been, well, one option had been presented to Dr. Knowles and I don't know. Right now, Danielle's the only one that can do the testing in the district, so. And she did come up to the high school and test the students, that was new to the country. But then, the window in the springtime will be opening where all the kids need testing, so. I don't know, I, we'd have to probably look at contracting somebody.
I was just going to say, wouldn't that be contracting?
Well, I mean, the key is finding somebody that could do that, that's certified, to do the testing, so. I would say that if we don't have anybody, we probably have to look at that as an option for the testing piece. Because, yeah. So and I, I don't know if at Daniel Elementary School, I know there was a break that wasn't being serviced because they're just, it didn't fit into the schedule and Danielle.
She's still trying to move things around and.
That's where we're at right now.
Thank you, Jennifer.
So I've been told it's too long.
I planned on it, yeah.
I explained some of the enrollment numbers, our enrollment right now is three fifty-eight. Your adjustments made over the summer that I reflected earlier. But I did include the notes about the homeschoolers who come for part of the time, so you're kind of aware where these numbers are coming from. Students that are tuitioned in from other districts, I thought was important for you. Postgraduate learn program, we have eight. Personnel are still seeking that ESOL position, even if it's, we need something, parent support, something. I don't know how to, we do need to follow this up that one together though. Our NEAS visit's coming up, so we're due for our Endocot survey and hoping to target a December, January survey of the, all the stakeholders. We had our professional development day, October 6th. We did some positive community building, don't read it all. Did some reflection and we modeled it after our task time. So interventions and enrichments, goal setting, reflection. So teachers were able to pick what they needed for supports when you start looking at the opportunities of Google apps, GoGuard, and enriching students. So they picked what they needed. And if, and there were opportunities for enrichment as well, up and beyond. Teachers presented, so it was teacher-led professional development. It worked out well, I think it was a positive, very positive day. We're still fine-tuning our task, our teacher and student collaboration time that's embedded in the day. Fine-tuning the use of the scheduling tool and enrichments and interventions and assigning that. I, I did put last board meeting, the inquiry courses and seminar courses in there. The inquiry courses are really about that inquiry and researching, designing, presentations, that model. Every group's doing something a little bit different. You may have seen a Caledonian Saturday, maybe, with a socktober on front, that's one of our inquiry courses. They're pretty excited about that. Our seminar courses, I gave a little bit more detail about the social, emotional transition. We're still working on formalizing some curricular resources for those teachers because there's different needs per grade level, seven, eight, nine. But they've been doing a good job, part of that times for studies and support. PSATs were administered to the juniors last week. Boy, were they excited. But the, but from the PSATs, we'll be able to use the college board to populate learning paths that are specific to the results they received on the PSATs to better prepare that for the SATs in the spring, so that's good. Our student support team continues to meet, we're still fine-tuning our approach to be tier, tier two instead of all the tiers at once, so that seems well on their way. Climate and culture, our mentoring's up and going. Melanie Hartless is coordinating the efforts with our mentors. They've been meeting, starting observations of our new teachers and having regular check-ins. Our Kindness Crusaders did the potluck breakfast on October 6th, it was delicious. And that's an example, think differently, a little sign there backwards. Those are some of the things you might see in the hallway if you're walking through the building. I'm sorry, are there students, the Kindness Crusaders? The Kindness Crusaders right now are the staff, it's more our hospitality. You know, they, we have task time groups like Yalta, those groups are working on culture too. I put in the data for athletics and I probably, I should have put drama in there as well. I wanted us to have a kind of a picture of the number of students that we're drawing into our after-school programs. So there's this chart. Junior varsity girls soccer and varsity girls soccer, those numbers are the same. I should put them together because they just, they just go varsity and then down to JV, almost to JV competition, same as our field hockey. But there's a hundred and thirty-two athletes this fall, set up six through twelve. About thirty percent of our students in grade seven to twelve are participating in athletics, that is thirty-one percent. That's not including the sixth grade in that data, that's twenty kids of the sixth grade coming out for athletics, that's great. If you added drama, Greg and I were just talking, it'd be closer to forty percent. There's a ton of kids, elementary school up, that are participating in this production. It's pretty exciting to see them practicing. Technology, our focus, our dominating focus during our PD day was the technology because we didn't have new technologies that teachers need to be working on. We did have a visit from the DOE. Our high school accreditation, facilities accreditation visit. So far, so good. And the fire inspection as well this past week. As far as school, parent, community events, Horace Mann provided lunch and a raffle for our professional development day and talked about like donor's choice and other opportunities for teachers to partner, not with them, but with donor's choice to kind of supplement some of the resources they might need for, I think, task time. So he was able to also come back and talk to them during our faculty meeting. Dinner Bell, we had our first group of students attend Dinner Bell as part of that, it's October. A group of students went down and served and cleaned up and supported our Dinner Bell, Mrs. Wood. They did a great job, they were very excited about it, they asked to go down again, so. Get them down there. Crusader Pride, Homecoming, I don't think I've talked to you since Homecoming. It went well, thanks to kind of fine-tune to make sure our McPerks more patrolled, I guess, because it is such a big space, it's hard to kind of bring them all together. We did have the Nicaraguan dancers on September 21st. They did a presentation for our students and then again at the Opera House. October 19th and 6th is our community collaborative. And I've kind of outlined the agenda and I've included that in my, my all-call for the week, so I'm hopeful to have more parents attend. And that's all, that's it. Any questions?
Thanks, Jennifer.
Thank you.
All right, so you see by the enrollment sheet I gave you, we went down slightly. Couple reasons, one of the main reasons, which was a nice problem to have, we never had this problem before. Typically, students from Grofton and White Mountain Regional take a bus down, it was overflow. So, some students, I think, because of that, and we tried to get, they tried because it's their responsibility to get another bus. And there is, there was not, or a driver available. So fortunately, Lynnwood is transporting some students in the regional here. Because actually Lynnwood goes to the regional first, then here. Shortcut, I guess. So we, so we did have an issue with overcrowding on the bus. So we'll have to take a look at next year and maybe work with Berry Transportation earlier. I know that they don't have an abundance of drivers, they're, they're struggling to find drivers as well. So that's one of the reasons why I was just down slightly. But moving on to industry and post-secondary connections. I attended a meeting up in Durham, the White Mountain University College. And they have advisories, program advisories like we do. So I sat in, I was asked to sit down with the, the one for their administration, if you will, at the college, with the president and other members, so that's the committee I was on. So that, so that was good. They've actually asked me to be, become part of that committee, which I think is really nice in terms of our running start connection and all that. And, but then I was able to sit with approximately a hundred people and all the other program advisories. And they did this presentation on a couple of programs up there. They did talk about enrollment as well, their downs for Whitley this year. Last year was their best year ever, apparently, for, for enrollees at the college, so. I also assisted, talked about colleges with a group of seniors to UNH for a college trip. Great opportunity for our seniors to visit with, there's over fifty colleges and universities there. So they could gather more information and hopefully make a, a choice that fits for them. Speaking of program advisories, our teachers at Hugh Galloway meeting and their program advisories this month. That was a goal for them to, to meet in October. We'll be hosting, discussing manufacturing and different programs, one at the college level and one at the high school level. Meeting on October 25th. We'll have industrial partners, folks from higher ed and state economic leaders. There's a real push, once again, to have skilled, skilled workforce for many of our positions here in the North Country. So that would be the focus of that, the North Country work, education placement. As you know, like I try and oversee teachers from Littleton, of course, that's pretty easy profile in Lisbon. As all of our schools in the North Country, or those three high schools are involved in internships. So we try and collaborate, work together and discuss those opportunities. So right now, in the North Country, many of those students are placed in, in the Littleton area, of course. We have over fifty students in internships between the three, the three high schools. So again, some other areas of, certainly the wire, New England Wire Technologies in Lisbon places, students as well. Good numbers there, but a lot of them are in, in Littleton area, so. Very thankful for our, our partners in industry and business to take in fifty, over fifty internships, students. And speaking of New England Wire Technologies, last year, they opened this just for Lisbon students, but they're going to expand it. So we're looking at students who, who may not have immediate college plans. And New England Wire Technologies will provide them with an internship, they call it a ninety-day interview. So they, so they go through the process and they go through certainly different skill sets and different areas in, at the wire mill. But they're also looking for some of those saw skills, if you will, those affordability skills, showing up on time, good work habits, those type of things. And again, if they don't have any college plans and they work out, they're in a ninety-day interview, they'll be hired. And again, what we try to do is provide a couple pathways for students in that field and many fields. Could be a student going off to college, coming back and working, or a student not sure what they want to do, going right into, right into work and then looking down, down the hall or across the floor and wondering why that person's making two dollars more an hour. And if we coordinate evening classes like. And if we coordinate evening classes like we are now, they can then go to college when they're a little more mature and know what they want to do and still progress through that pathway. Program improvement, professional development. As you've heard me talk about PACE in the past, we had four of our CT teachers take the opportunity to participate in PACE training on our staff development day. They went down to Concord to meet. And I believe that they're all going to continue that work with PACE. The next PACE meeting will be in November. It's going to be held in the North Country. We'll see if everybody comes up. Last week, we hosted Region Three. Region Three is Hugh Gowan Center and Paradise Center and White Mountain Regional and all the schools that feed into those centers. As you know, we have to meet four times a year. We involve superintendents, administrators, sometimes guidance, and then other people from different professions participate and provide feedback on programs and program development. So we hosted that meeting last week. We also hosted professional development. We didn't have to do much. We just provided them with the space, but I thought it was nice to host new directors. PD, there are about five new CT directors in the state. And our organization pays for some professional development for them. So we've actually hired someone who used to be a director from Pinkerton for many years to help with that. So they meet four or five times a year. There's two new North Country directors. One's in Conway, one's in Berlin. So I thought it'd be nice if we hosted it for their travel. So we did that last week as well. Our group again, our New Hampshire Technical Directors Association, with our funding, of course, hired an executive director, Christine Carr, to help promote the good work of pre-technical education. Worked with folks in Concord and ensure that some of the funding remains because as I always talk about, losing, possibly losing tuition and transportation money. If that happens, you know, I don't think we see very many students from other schools. So it's important that we have a voice there. So we fired her and she was up here last week as well touring our facility and talking with us. And actually, I spent a short time with Bino Lamontang talking about economic development. So he came over and we had a good discussion. Just working on the recommendations. As you know, we were monitored last spring by the DOE. So we do, what they want us to do is, which we do an inventory, of course, and we do like most people, electronic inventory. Because of Perkins, every party are physical inventory. So I have to walk around and just match everything. So that's a process. That's not a big deal to do. Some of our programs, we wanted to see improvement or enhancement in participation in program advisory. So that's in the work for this October. And to work on articulation agreements in a few programs. Running Start is kind of odd because for some programs, you don't even need a bachelor. You could run a, you're eligible for Running Start in a solstice degree. Some other programs require a master's. So we have some teachers without a master's and they want to allow us to offer Running Start. So we have to offer different articulation agreements. The problem with that is when you do create an articulation agreement, that's fine. But that credit's only good in that school if that student goes there. Running Start is transferable. That's another reason why I'm eager to be on the board to help push that through. And that's it. Programs doing well.
All right. So as you probably knew, near the end of August, beginning of September, we were informed by the town that the plowing and sanding was going to be a school responsibility as opposed to the town. Any further, I've had some discussions with Mr. De Palma regarding how he could help. You have on your drive the one bid that we've received since, I believe I've talked to eight companies, contractors at this point, and that's the one bid that we've received back. As Jen mentioned, the DOE was here two weeks ago now. I thought the inspection went very well. She was very complimentary. She actually, she walked every room at the high school and she walked directly, or walked behind the kids directly after their break time in the cafeteria to try to find a piece of paper on the floor or any sort of trash on the floor. And she found nothing. So kudos to the kids, to staff, custodial team that, you know, and they didn't know that she was coming. So it's not like they were tipped off. So when we hear about all the bad things kids do, they do good things as well. Tomorrow, we have the Department of Labor inspector coming to finalize our Department of Labor walk from February of 2016. There's about a dozen areas that needed to be fixed after meeting with him in August. We've walked, they are to standard, to expectation. So hopefully it'll be a clean visit tomorrow. From technology, the camera install was finished at Lakeway since the last board meeting. The last two cameras we have to go in this year are at the Academy, which are budgeted for, but currently has not been set up yet. As we know, Dr. Niles stole my thunder about the local vendor assisting with our website. So I won't repeat that a second time. And then lastly, something we also talked about at the tech committee meeting today. We have the Promethean boards in pretty much every classroom in our district. They're aging, just like any other technology. At some point, as a committee, as a school district, we have to decide what the next step is going to be, what technology we want to go with. We were discussing today and the recommendation from the committee is to send out a staff survey to everyone. What do they use their board for? And for those that use it as a modified projector, that they can go back to a projector and a drop-down screen, they don't need the expensive interactive whiteboard if it's not really a need. Those are fairly expensive. You're talking about on average $4,000 per device. And we own about $68, so $68. They were purchased between 2008, 2011. I believe it was mostly grant-funded of some sort. So it wasn't a hit. But we're on borrowed time, I think, is the best way that the tech committee said today with that. And then lastly, the PD day that we did have, it was all tech. A majority of it was tech-based and I would say that it was well organized. It was great to work with Jen, the staff, help them out with some of the things. And I hope, and pretty much everybody I talked to was very complimentary of the structure and the smaller groups and the more one-on-one training. And it was just, it was a different perspective than I guess I was used to in the last year plus of how to get the word out to the staff, how to help them. And the staff was very receptive. So the approval of the snow removal and the bid at the board's direction, I would like to request to go into non-public to discuss.
I have one question before that, Dale. As far as the locations he has listed here, since the Sherwin Dodge Building has been sold, who has a responsibility for that lot now?
So the latest MOU that we had that was with the town was us, or was them. So the MOU that was presented to the contractors included that, but I don't know.
Yeah, it's been listed on this.
It's not on that particular, okay. It is our, to my knowledge, it is our responsibility.
Is the rent the same as when the courier owned it? Yeah, the same with the new owners? Good, that's good.
Thank you.
All right. As you can see, our enrollment stayed the same despite some movement. I did have fours in there, but my math was terrible. It was three in and three out last night. I could literally change that every day without, we have kids moving in all the time. Staff development, I just listened in there that Mel's working with a consultant. She has met with our vertical team. That went really well. The staff seemed pretty positive. Her work will continue mostly with Mel for the year. On our interviewist day, we spent time exploring Power Teacher Pro. Amy and Mel collaborated and presented together. So that's something, that's a piece of power school that we're going to learn and practice and explore with all year before rolling it out with parents. So we'll devote a little bit of time every faculty meeting and every interviewist day to that sort of training. At our faculty meeting, we focused on social emotional learning. Kind of a lot of what I was speaking about at the budget work session. So we spent the entire hour after school and actually, we, most of us stayed a little bit longer just inventorying what we currently have, what we're currently using. They did a reflection based on the PLC and I'm working with Peggy Bronley. She's going to work with the PLC teams to see if we can streamline that to get some more common language of the grade levels. But that'll be a work in progress. We had our first midterm progress report sent home on Friday. As far as technology, Amy, I think I presented this before. She'll be attending the Krista McCall conference, I believe, and Matt is also going. We had two teachers, our fifth and sixth grade science and social studies teacher, teachers attended the computer science summit in Berlin. Really, they were going there for the project lead away information, but they picked up a bunch of other knowledge while they were there. So they're going to start rolling a little bit more of that out each time they go. They learn a little bit more. Currently, we have no open positions. So that is a positive thing. And that link there is what you requested, Jim. You'd asked me to put that together. So that's really just there for your reference and we can review that at a budget meeting. Lisa Harold was very helpful with that piece and Kelly collaborated on that as well. So I just wanted you to know it was there. We can discuss that at the budget work session if you prefer. We've had a really busy month with community events and school events. We had International Walk to School Day. John Gorgon, who helped get that program off the ground to begin with, had walked with them to school the first time. They had Walking Wednesday and he joined our group this year and took a picture on the same route they had taken the first time just to show the improvements. And the link is on there. They did put us on his Safe Route to School with DOT's webpage. So those pictures are posted there. We had Fire Prevention Week. I put a bunch of pictures in there. The fire department goes into each kindergarten class to present. And Sparky's fire department with them this year, so that was very exciting. And then they do two presentations in the gym, one for first through third grade and one fourth through sixth. And Sparky was able to make it to both of those, so that was very exciting again. And we did the annual poster contest, which was, it ended with fire truck rides to school on Fridays the 13th. So that was full of energy. This year, we did a raffle for teachers. So Karen Anderson won the teacher trip to school in a fire truck. So that was neat. Last week, we had the Mark PVD Memorial Fund Run at 3:30. We raised $270 for the Student Activities Fund. And Tony Pofari finished the race in 15 minutes and 21 seconds. So that was his personal best. He was very excited. He got his picture on the Facebook page, so.
Very dedicated, yeah.
Kind of overlooked about that. We had our first Leopard pep rally and that's the video I wanted to show you. There's a picture in there too. Danielle Cook has joined our PBIS team and she's putting her coaching talents to good work for Lakeway. And she had the entire student body cheering. It was really kind of exciting to see. The kids are really excited. And then the sixth grade leaders, I've worked with Peggy Bronley. It's a really devoted group of sixth grade leaders this year. They wrote a rap song based about the leopard competencies. The sixth graders wrote it themselves, sang it, everything. They coordinated it. They did an awesome, awesome job. So I just wanted you to be able to see that.
Sorry. Sorry, the high technology.
Maybe the light could.
Super dark, sorry.
So much for the camera.
Hopefully it'll work. Incitiation is coming. Am I drinking? Danielle, you're doing the all-star.
No, you're good. We probably should have clicked it before.
I would have moved it today. That's why I see all day on my computers.
Oh, did you?
Kind of very anti-climatic, just to work, but I didn't really get to everybody, so.
Is it a child in the dark with a thing? Very good.
I'll work.
It was actually like the best day of the week. We were kind of worried about bringing it outside, but.
Maybe. Just trying to make it connected. Is it connected?
Look at the connection. Sometimes you have to reset the connection.
All right. It might be out of my.
You're in. It's connected. Would you refresh the page or something?
Oh, brother. Here, let's just do this and see if it. Oh, bummer. All right, well, that's a bummer. I did link this to everybody. It is worth a watch. It's only about a minute and a half long.
Do you able to get a connection this year? Or maybe, I don't know. Click on that. That's it, that's all I just said.
Dale?
Firewall?
How do you do it, Dale?
You want me to do it? You keep talking. You gotta stretch it out here.
For the last thing, we will celebrate Red Ribbon Week. That's a later push for Lisa and Peggy Bronley also through that week. Last year, we overlapped it with Fire Prevention Week. So that was pretty much excitement.
Hey Dale, if you go download it instead of playing it, it works right there, yeah.
It's only 142 megawatts.
That's why we got the big pipe.
That's possibly the pipe just spinning there.
They have no patience. I don't want folks to wait, you know, and all that, whatever.
Well, I can share something good about Lakeway while we're waiting too.
Do Dale.
This came in the mail to my seven-year-old the other day from the principal. And she was so excited and basically is thanking Nora for letting Crystal come in and watch you read to your group and develop their reading skills. And she just thought it was the best thing ever. So I think, yeah, this was a really good thing.
They love getting mail.
They do. I love getting mail and then from the principal. Come on.
I wrote eight of those that day because I realized I'd seen kids reading and they were very gracious and happy with them. But that was an initiative we started this year. We have a huge stack of postcards in the office and I've asked the teachers to send at least one positive postcard home a week to a kid, a parent, a family, whatever. And it just kind of encourages people to look for the positive. Kids love getting mail. And it's such a bragging point because they know that everybody's read that postcard in the post office and on the way home. No other read it before they got home.
Why don't you take this off for bulletin boards? She's six, so hopefully she doesn't know it's gone.
Right, so we downloaded it and it's outside base, but you'll still be able to hear it.
You just tell them. You watch this on Channel 2, you're not projecting TV.
You watch this on Channel 2, you're not adjusting TV.
So that was pretty brave of them to stand up there and do that. That was some kind of case for six, all of the students and staff were there.
I like that chicken.
That was a bonus addition.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks for your job. Personnel, I don't think...
We did, we did, and we'll have to present and...
Facilities, I have something about school safety committee in schools.
Ow!
Related facilities.
Play all day?
Yeah.
So, anybody have any thoughts on that?
I think I'm going to ask Al to, to chime in on this a little bit, anybody else that's been involved with the, with the safety committee. Sometimes we have our safety committees that meet regularly, of course our facilities committees meet regularly and the two, the two will, will cross over quite a bit, particularly when it comes to budget related expenditures, especially expenditures that come through the safety committee that come into the facility's budget. I think the question there was is how we can, how we can manage that as tightly as possible through the budget process. I know Dale's working on his, on his F and O budget for next year, as, as it has been. But there's certain things that are kind of probably going to come up through the years as well. Maybe even after the budget's been developed, that we'll have to look at that will be a safety expenditure that may have to come out of the budget areas.
Well, a couple of years ago, Tom created a budget line for safety needs, so that will be part of, as I cross over, we talked about facility needs. But we do have, you know, very, very active safety committees. So we meet once a month, of course, building related, and then once a month as a district. And we involve fire chief, police chief, rescue service, Alex, and any other appropriate participants.
Yep.
And I'm not sure why this, why this is on there, but as you know, we've been working on our emergency operation plan. We've done that for over two years now. And we're really at the stage where we need to contract some of that work out. The town uses a person who does that work and probably next month, we'll come back with a recommendation to the superintendent that we do some work, just finalizing our emergency operations plan for the district. The main thing now at this stage, we need to tie it in with the town's operation plan and it only makes sense for us to work with who is involved at the town level. So then when we have a renewal process, a review process, we do it together. So that's one thing we've, we're working on quite a bit, is that emergency operation plan. And I think as far as Littleton, because I know Mr. Baden went to a conference in the summer and talking with other schools, we're actually way ahead of the curve on our other operation plan, but we just need to complete it and tie it together with the towns.
I guess my concern for quite a while now has been, why do we have two safety committees? One for each building? Why can't we incorporate it into one with participation from both groups and your fire chief and whoever else, and we meet once a month?
We do that. We do that. So we meet once, once a month for the district with, with both committees, if you will.
Yep.
We meet and we talk about district needs, emergency operation plan, AL's training, all of that. And then we're moving forward with even, even doing some desktop drills, if you want, to make sure that we have certain things in place in terms of, you know, the main, one of the main issues always is communication and make sure that that's real clear. At the building level, we talk about specific needs to that building and part of our, our labor board inspection as well, we have to have minutes there addressing any, any accidents or any issues with staff. So we do that at the building level because some of those are building specific and be corrected at that level. So we do do both, we do both.
And I know with our EOP, they require it to be building, building based, we couldn't do just a whole district.
No.
No.
But when we, when we talk about certainly safety needs, so we talk about cameras, talk about treatments for windows, we're doing that as, as a district because we want things to be consistent. You see, we spend a lot of time and effort. It only makes sense that if we're going to use a vendor for cameras, we use the same vendor for all buildings, tying it in together. That, that wasn't always the case. So I think we've made great progress in, in recent years.
Well, yes, that's why I was thinking that you should only have one building committee, maybe to 12, but obviously I guess you can't. And in the past few years, I've noticed that we've had a lot of budgetary items come in at the very last minute. So if there's something that's for security or other reasons, it should be in the budget upfront.
That's why Tom created those lines for us as well.
Policy, we haven't had a meeting, but we will fairly soon. Superintendent's report.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go quite in the order that's there. I'll save the best for last. And there's some other items as well I'll discuss and you can, there is a, there is a document that derives a superintendent's report. I think just to thank administrative team, teachers, staff, I'm sitting here tonight as, as a, as hearing these reports, there's been a lot happening. And you know, you get in now, we're really getting into the, the heart of the, you know, the semester and things are very, very busy, lots of things are happening. Our sports season, believe it or not, is starting to wind down already with our, with our fall sports. It won't be long that we'll be, we'll be enjoying hopefully some, some extended run in postseason and then we'll be into winter sports. But you know, it's really, really a lot of things are happening. And again, my, my kudos to, to the reports, those of either reports tonight and also those who, who are not here, but of course they're coming to work every day and making it possible, and of course for the kids and family. I, I've asked, one thing that I was, was clear that for some time that we need to, again, focus, focus our, what we're trying to do in terms of school improvement, focus on what our, what our areas of need are. And, and this process started a little bit last year with curriculum advisory council, with our administrative team report or retreat we had this summer. At the end of the day, I've mentioned the big three before, but I still want to come back to the big three occasionally and talk about what we're trying to focus most of our efforts on. The competency-based education, universal design for learning, there it is again, Derek, and socio-emotional learning. Those are, those are the three goals. Those are the three areas of focus. And most of what we've done, most of what I saw happening back on, on April 6th was focused on those three areas, or at least something to help us get there. Maybe it was technology to help us get there or whatever. So I think it is important that we keep those three areas out front. There's many other things, it's not, this isn't everything that we're doing, but we've tried to make it, make our goals, we put our effort, our energy, our resources in terms of time, funding and so on in those three areas. Crystal mentioned that Mel was with our consultant the other day and with our partner from SAU36 as well. And we'll be, we'll be meeting actually tomorrow as a follow-up for that and looking to the next visit that the consultant will be making to Littleton to talk, to continue to work on the competency-based education plan that we're working out. Universal design for learning, again, is, is a ongoing support there. We had some teachers go to a conference not too long ago from Lakeway. It's, it's been a part of many of our other conversations, it's been a part of what we've been doing as well, that close to socio-emotional learning is an ongoing effort and challenge, challenge. And I think, I think looking ahead, we're going to have to think about staffing, we're going to have to, have to think about using what we have differently or adding staffing perhaps in that area. Because we have many, many, many students and families that, that we really, that really need our support and we really have to work, work to put those services together and give them off, give them the best chance for being successful. I, I wanted to talk, bring up an idea, and this is not a new idea, about leasing a vehicle though. And this is just, just to throw it out tonight. Not, and I think again, once we get all the, all the estimates and cost, costs of calculate, we're going to see if we could probably afford to, to lease a smaller vehicle, 10 passenger vehicle, a vehicle that would accommodate a few students, a handful of students to the number of the events that we're currently taking a bus, a large bus, often times. Or in some cases, we're having employees transport students in their cars and that gives, runs chills up Tom's spine and mind a little bit and our insurer, insurer as well, although it's well within our, it's within, it's within the parameters of our policy to do so, as long as we validate their, their driver's license and so on. Still not a good practice. It's not a good practice to have, but we don't have a choice oftentimes. We have, we have a teacher that, maybe we have an individual that has one student to transport to an event and if it comes down to, you know, to having them take it in their car or renting a bus for $300 or more, it's kind of a no-brainer. So I think once we start looking at the cost of doing it correctly, which would be, or at least the least of best practice, which would be no, 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 none of our drivers on staff using a personal vehicle, then I think that will probably cost out fairly favorably. We haven't, we haven't received official in writing notification yet, but we have indication it looks like that our, will no longer be a part of the SIG process, which has been going for a while. And that's, that's again, is something that I think has been phased out a bit, although there are schools that are still required, required to be a part of SIG if their student performance hasn't risen to a level that allowed it, that doesn't require them anymore. It appears, it appears that we have risen to a level where we're no longer going to be a part of that and there'll be more, more details on that when we get it. I did want to comment on a, on a very enjoyable morning going to, over to St. John's Bay Academy to, with a, I don't know, 30 students or so and Dev and Al and sponsors to watch a production of Hammer. So it's nice to see our teaching students get out and have a chance to join several hundred other students from a couple of states to see that production. Dale mentioned snow plowing and we're going to talk more about that later, but I think we're going to have to find creative ways to do that. Probably, probably has the potential to have significant budget implications that I don't think we're probably willing to take at this time. I did want, I did want to reassure you, we are following up with vendors, with other entities we're working with regarding background checks of their employees, their process, proof that it's going. There's, there's still, it's still a little murky. In some cases, there, there is, there is a indication at one point that even though our transportation provider obviously did background checks on all their employees, we would have to conduct our own background checks on those drivers that drove for our buses. And now that, that doesn't seem logical, it doesn't seem like now that's the case, I hope not. I think if you think about that, we would, they're probably involved in background checks for almost all the drivers because at times they switch and they sub and they, it'd be a nightmare. So at this point, that's not, not something that's happening. And then, and then the last item, which was on the agenda, which is the half, some early Monday state, probably, probably not the most popular thing, I don't know, I've been in a number of communities that have done these. I don't know how prevalent this practice is in New Hampshire, I think it's been, I think it's happened here before. That being where periodically to give our teachers time to do the staff development or work on the areas that I talked about, to work on competency-based education, to work on universal design, to work on our SEO, to work on accreditation process, to work on technology. I could keep going, as long as you want me to go. But there's, there's not, there's, there are not optimal times to do that and frankly, the little bit of staff development that we have built in at the beginning of the year and scattered throughout the year, a couple of days throughout the year is woefully inadequate. So we're going to have to either find some time to, for teachers to do this and not have school periodically on half-days, half-day releases, or find some other creative ways to do that, but the work is going to have to get done. And it's usually, it's usually, usually preferable to do this, we don't, we've looked at, we will, there are times we will try to hire subs and we will try to do different things to try to support some of the things we're doing when it doesn't involve everybody, but there are times we'll need to have everybody. And I did, did want to ask, you know, ask for input, questions, reassurances, Crystal, Crystal and Jennifer both, I ask them to be prepared to, you know, to answer questions or concerns that might be a part of this as we look at this going forward.
I have several concerns.
Yep.
Is Maggie looking for those tonight or?
Oh, I, I...
Let us chew it for a while?
Let, let you chew it. Yeah, I'll let you...
I'm going to let you chew it.
Yeah, I mean, this is, you know, this, this isn't, this isn't, this isn't the most popular thing typically for schools to do, but many, many schools are and it's something I think we'd have to look at those concerns and, and questions and do our best to address those. But we're going to need some, we're going to need to find a way to get some of the work done. We need to get it done, the one, one hour, one hour a month is kind of, is kind of what we're squeezing in with some occasional faculty. So yeah, I'll leave it at that for tonight.
Alright. Anything else to come before this public meeting? If not, would you motion to go into non-public?
I make the motion to enter into non-public session under paragraph two, section three of the RSA 91A colon three of the right to know law for number two, the hiring of any person as a public employee. Number three, matters that would adversely affect the reputation of any person under or member of the board.
Right, then number four.
Number four, consideration, oh, your consideration of the acquisition, sale or lease of real estate or personal property, taking with us the superintendent, Dale Pryor, I believe, for the...
Right.
One topic.
And Tom.
And Tom?
Tom and Patty.
Okay.
For your second?
Second?
Will call vote.
Greg Cooper.
Ken Woodson? Billy Nelson?
Jim Adams?
And we're done.